If you'd please stand. Councilwoman Paget is going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you pray with me? Father, we do thank you for our country. We thank you for this flag and thank you for what it means to all of us and to all of those that have lost their lives and served to make this country great. We just want to thank you for them and thank you for our country. Thank you for this community, Father, and I thank you for all of the men and women that have committed their lives to making this a place of a great -- a place to live and to care for one another. I just pray that you be with each council member and the city manager and the mayor and all of those that are in this room that's making decisions. We just ask that as each one comes with a different talent and ability, that you make this journey a great one for this group, that you make them a team, that you unite them, that they'll work together, that this community will even be greater. So we ask that you bless them and bless this meeting. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Don. I call to order our Public Works Authority meeting. Do we -- the second item on the agenda is public comment, community announcements. Do we have anything at all? Not at this time. We have consent agenda, items A through D. For your approval, item A is minutes. Item B is solicitation for bids on a prefab structure to cover our liquid chlorine station. That's to -- in respect to some changes in DEQ requirements. Item C is a solicitation of bids for replacing two sections of sewer line, again, to meet Oklahoma DEQ requirements. And D is to approve a permit -- permit from Oklahoma DEQ.
To construct.
To construct. And it's new lines that are impacted by the Viaduct construction.
What about E and F?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Stand corrected. The consent agenda is items A through F. And item E is authorization to contract with Aetna for medical and life insurance. They were the low bid, I believe. Jim, they were the low bid on the life insurance. And item F is to authorize city staff to contract with MetLife for dental insurance, also the low-quality bid in that arena. So those are items A through F on the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion and a second to approve those.
So moved.
Second. Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Please submit your votes.
I'll vote Durant.
And it's unanimous approval of all those items on the consent agenda, which is the only agenda items that we have for the Public Works Authority meeting. We are adjourned from that meeting, and I now call to order our city council meeting. Do we have any public comments or -- okay. For any of the items on the city council? We also have a fairly lengthy consent agenda, items A through F. A and B are minutes of previous meetings from the workshop and for regular city council. C is approval for an agreement with the public school district to have two additional school resource officers at the school. The school would be paying for each of those, $32,000 each. And when school is not in progress, they would revert back to the city police force in regular duties. Item D is solicitation of bids for construction, the pilot lounge. So it's just solicitation of those bids. Item E is authorizing city staff to contract with Aetna for the medical insurance. F, with MetLife for the dental insurance. Those are the items on the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second to approve those.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Submit your vote, please.
I'll vote Durant.
Unanimous approval on the consent agenda, items A through F. Third item on the agenda, discussion of possible action on Historic Preservation Commission appeal regarding installation of handrails at 105 West Cleveland Avenue. Discussion, please. Is there any discussion? Is there any staff discussion? Cody?
Just to give council an update, this is an appeal for representing Bonnie Calvert, who applied earlier this year for handrail installation. The HPC decided to ask her to remove the current handrails. They did not necessarily say that she couldn't install handrails, but they were looking for a more commercial look. Ed was -- Councilman Wood was actually on the HPC at that time, and so he has a little bit of history on this as well. Again, I kind of want to stress, they did not say that she wasn't allowed to have handrails, but they were looking for a more commercial look. One of our HPC commissioners just stepped in. We -- Ms. Calvert had asked to have a conversation with an HPC member to kind of discuss, you know, her options, those kinds of things, and it was reevaluated. There were certain deadlines. These are all in the cover letter, of course, but there were certain deadlines. The handrails are still standing as, you know, as they were, you know, a few months ago. But until her appeal was sought, she has kept those handrails up.
All right. Discussion, questions of Cody?
Yes, as ex officio of the Historic Preservation Commission, as I understand it and know that the Historic Preservation Commission has turned down the request for the handrails basically twice. First time it was not revisited, the second time it was brought before the commission. As the rest of the commission had felt they were too residential in looking, needed to be something more appropriate to the historic nature of downtown Guthrie and a more professional install than what is there, is that both handrails are at different heights and look different as they're put on the building. So that's probably why, or the main reason why, they were turned down. And that's pretty much it. I would say that Historic Preservation Commission pretty well should.
How long have they been there, do you know?
They were put up earlier this year, before tax time, and they were -- it was assured that they would be taken down after tax time. They were supposed to be taken down by May 1st, but they weren't. It was -- they were put up and then it was more or less ask forgiveness than permission when they were put up.
So there was no application prior to installation?
Correct.
The application was following?
Yes.
Following the actual installation?
Just to clarify, she had applied. She had applied. She was trying to meet the February meeting. She did not meet the deadline. She applied for the March one. In between the time that her application was seen by the Historic Preservation Commission, she had them installed. And so she had shown intent to apply before she had installed them.
All right. All right. Timing was just a little odd. Okay? Any other? Is there any public comment on this item? No. I'm sorry.
I just wondered why it's a big deal. I mean, I drove by and I didn't even notice them. I mean, they don't stand out as a pimple on that street or anything. They don't really -- I can name a lot of other buildings that have more issues that we should be taking issue with. This is on a side street across from the library, which is not terribly an old-looking building, you know? And that whole street, it doesn't look bad as you drive by. It doesn't stand out as an issue. And I just wondered why it's a -- why it almost feels like we're bullying someone into taking down these rails. That's what it feels like. I'm just.
Well, it shouldn't really have been an issue. It should never have been an issue. But the problem is, is that as Historic Preservation looks at it, every little tiny chip away at the fabric of the look of Guthrie, it builds up. And if one thing is allowed, then another thing is allowed, and eventually, the whole look of Guthrie is gone. And that's what is our backdrop for bringing tourism and economic growth for downtown or for Guthrie proper. So it's kind of not necessarily being bullied, it's just that the proper thing should be there as it's -- that's why we have a Historic Preservation.
I actually drove around town and started looking at these rails because I've heard some about it over the course of the last few weeks. I talked to Randall some about it. I think a lot of it is that when a commission makes a ruling and/or, "Okay, so I'm going to go get a driver's license, but I didn't go ahead and apply, so I'm going to drive anyway." It's a stupid scenario, I know, but it's the same. Okay? And so when you go around and you look around, they are a lot more beefy that has been approved through the commissions. Okay? A lot more beefy. About twice as beefy, if we want to call it that. But I think it still goes down to, we got to stop this asking for forgiveness, and it needs to be in the historical district permission, period. Because that's why we have the commission. And that's just my opinion.
And I would stand by the commission's first opinion and ruling, and I would make a motion to deny the appeal.
Now, second. Is there further discussion?
I just want to note, if you look at the picture, oh my gosh, I mean, we're allowing work like this to be on.
That's what I'm saying.
It goes like this, and then it goes like this. I mean, that's not -- I mean, it's not even straight. I mean, there would be question if it was straight, but this is not even straight. It looks junky. It looks like somebody who doesn't know how to put rails up, put the rails up. So, I mean, it looks a little funky there, and I have a problem with that.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
James, since he's on the -- James? Go ahead. James Long?
You signed up, James?
I'm not signed up. I just asked if I could public comment. He asked if there's any public comments, so I just asked if I could public comment.
Is that how we do it? We just public comment and stand up? I'm just curious if we are. You're more than willing to talk. I mean, I'm more than welcoming to talk, but I'm just curious because it seems that that's what we're doing when we want to, but yet we have somewhere to sign up.
Well, the sign up is outside.
Then I guess I won't talk.
No, go ahead. No, but I'm just for future, I'm just trying to clarify.
I asked if there was public -- any public.
You did at the beginning, which is not on the agenda.
Go ahead, Mr. Long.
Okay, so the picture that is provided, I think, is at poor angle. If you were to actually go by and look, you see that the rail is attached, one to the side of the -- if you're facing the door on the left side directly to the building, and then right by the door, the building itself juts out. So it has to be fixed at a different -- it's a different angle because the building is not straight there either. So I think that the picture kind of gives it an unfair look. Yes, is it residential-grade material? Yes, it is. And I'll be honest with you, in the initial voting, I voted it down. However, when I went by and drove and looked at it myself, and not just from the picture, I think that we should pick our battles. It's on the same street that a previous board approved a metal building in the back. So if you want to talk about what's allowed in the historic district, it's on the same street that a previous board allowed for a metal structure to be built in historic downtown. So if you want to pick our battles, I think we lost a much bigger one previous years over these handrails, but that's my personal opinion.
So before you leave, though, I'd like to ask a question real quick. So you believe -- you're on HP.
Yes.
So you believe that we just start asking for forgiveness instead of?
No, I believe a fine should be -- I should believe a fine should be.
A fine is already supposed to have been implemented, and it hasn't been implemented.
But I don't -- but I don't -- I'm not in favor of making her remove them. I mean, they're sturdy. I mean, they're put down with bolts there. I've tried to wiggle it myself. They're sturdy. There's only 18 inches of them. I mean, there's not much there to wiggle.
Well, one's 18, the others look significant, about twice the size, right?
No, it's not twice the size. You've got three spindles on one and I think two on another.
Four and three, you're on.
Okay, four and three. So there's probably about four inches between each of those spindles, maybe five inches. So you're not talking about much.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Further discussion?
I do have a question, though. Ed, you were the chairman of that committee at the time, so do you have a conflict on this? And Brian, your wife is on the commission. Do you have a conflict on this to vote on it? Just asking.
Ed is ex officio. He's not a voting member.
He was the chairman at the time this came up on the committee. He was chairman of the committee when they dealt with it.
I'm going to ask the city attorney if there is.
Ed's -- but let me respond to mine. Ethically, morally, I've not discussed this. I've not discussed it with Ed. I've not discussed it with my wife. She's brought it up. I've walked out. I've looked at all the details on it. I went back and looked at the HP meetings. I saw your vote. I saw everybody's vote. This doesn't come down to removing rails, people. This comes down to if we have guidelines and we're saying that our rule is you ask for permission in a historic district, I don't care what it is. Forget the metal building, that was a whole nother council, board, whatever. Okay? But if we have rules, you follow them, period. Or you get fined. It's just as simple as that. And we don't want to make it hard to do business in Guthrie. We want to make it real easy to do business in Guthrie. So, you know, are we going to allow -- just because it's over on a side street and it's still historical Guthrie, are we going to allow it going down First Street?
We put a metal building there.
Exactly, but.
So, I mean, that metal building's much bigger than these 18-inch rails that you don't even notice.
Did the metal building get permission or ask forgiveness?
Yeah, they got permission.
Then there you have it. I'm more talking about the forgive -- I'm not forgetting this side, but I'm talking about the forgiveness versus permission side of it.
So you're going to have her take them down? But you won't have someone -- but you're not okay with that? You're okay with the rails or with the tin building, but you're not okay with?
Have you gone and physically?
Tin building?
Well, the tin building's not before -- it's not on the agenda.
Let's have one conversation at a time, please.
But you have physically touched and felt, right? Went up there and looked at it?
I didn't touch them. I can see from the street what they look like. I didn't walk up there and grab them.
And then you went around and looked at the other ones that were approved throughout town?
I used to go on that commission a long time ago. So I'm familiar with what you're talking about.
There's nothing like.
And I agree that you need to get permission before you do something.
Exactly.
But now that it's there, is it really that bad? It's not as bad as some other things we've approved?
Again, it's on a case-by-case basis, and because if it's a case-by-case basis, that is how that -- that's how the commission works. If it seems or is deemed not to be detrimental to the historic fabric of the city, which the metal building you're talking about is hidden behind another 1950s block building and is on an alley. It also takes cars off the street for -- because it's a garage. It was -- the colors were actually changed from the original plan, so it blended in.
And you don't even --
So, you know, I mean, there was things that would.
Unless you intend to look at them. Unless you're looking for those rails, you're going to see them.
Unless you look -- that's right. Unless you look for them, and you can't find this one unless you know where it is.
I've got two questions. I've got two questions I want to ask. First one, what was the vote on the -- to remove it? Do you know? How many people voted yes? How many people voted no? Or do you remember?
At the time, I think that we had five acting members, and it was unanimous vote to have her remove the handrails. I do want to kind of add a little bit to that statement in that the HPC did ask her to remove it by May 1st. The deadline did come, and I think that this is in the cover letter as well. The deadline did come. Staff went and approached her face to face, had a conversation with it. She requested a meeting with the HPC commission -- a HPC commission member just to kind of talk about it. At that point, whenever she learned about that, we asked for volunteers to come in. And so to address the fine issue that's been brought up twice, technically, she hasn't even exhausted her options for appeal. That's what she's doing tonight. And, you know, I don't know if she is interested in pursuing Board of Adjustment after that, if the handrails are still not approved or anything like that, but technically, she hasn't exhausted her options for appeal. But according to the timeline, we asked for an HPC commission member to have a conversation with her in June. That didn't happen. We didn't -- we had a couple of members volunteer and then weren't able to follow through. In July, I asked for members again. That's why you're seeing it here tonight. So -- but at the time, the vote was unanimous.
So even if we turn this down, she can still go ahead and appeal it again? Is that what you're saying? So why don't we look at it?
I don't think so.
I think Board of Adjustment wouldn't.
I think Board of Adjustment's not going to hear something the city council has voted on. So that's probably not going to -- you know, that's sometimes an option. I don't think that is an option here, or remedies district court from here.
And yeah, I don't know that she's interested in pursuing, you know, this. If the city council doesn't see this, I'm sure she would be more than glad to take them down.
Okay, I'll throw one more rock at the glass windows, the saying goes, "When are we going to do something about the mess down here with the paint job?" That's more what I'm concerned about than even.
I'm going to ask you not to talk about that.
I know, I know, but.
It's not on the agenda.
It's a whole nother. I know, but what I'm saying is.
I think you're saying, is there consistency in what we enforce?
Right, if we're not going to be -- if we're just laying it out. I don't like the paint job either. I know everybody else is, you know, I'm not going to bring this up, but I'm just saying, I'm using that as an example of a minute.
I understand the city attorney is kind of suggesting I not address that, but.
I don't want you talking about that at all tonight.
I'm not asking anybody to address it. I'm just saying, if we're going to be consistent, let's either do it all right or let's don't do anything.
I think the point is, being consistent. Being consistent.
And that's what I'm saying. I'm saying that.
And whether it's a small thing, which this clearly is a small thing.
Thing, I know.
But consistency would reflect whether it's small or whether it's large.
Well, inconsistency within a council or multiple councils and memory. I mean, if no one remembers something like, you know, what happened with aluminum fence 20 years ago? I mean, you can't be consistent across city council 100 years. You know what I'm saying? I mean, we can be consistent within memory and whatnot, not to throw in, well, there's an exception here. I mean, we had a problem with sidewalks recently, last year or so, where somebody said, "Well, I don't want to have a sidewalk. I'm going to put a fence all the way at the end." Well, and we had a problem with that. And it's because, you know, we want to be consistent, that we say, "Hey, you can't block where a sidewalk would be." I mean, that's consistency.
And I would think that if the applicant's appealing this, she would be here. Simple as that. I've been through this on the Board of Adjustment in the past. If you're going to appeal something, show up and discuss it. She's not here.
Further discussion?
Well, I didn't hear an answer to my question about.
Well, I don't think Brian has to abstain. His wife and he are both voters, and I don't think the fact that they're married in this situation would prevent him from voting on this. I still need to kind of clarify, Councilman Wood, what your role on the HP was.
I'm not -- I think I was probably the chair of the HP the first time that came through.
Okay, if you were the chair, I think you need to recuse from this.
And I will.
Which means you need to withdraw your motion.
I will withdraw my motion, then to withdraw or turn down.
Okay? And then you need to leave us for a period of time?
So clarify, so yes would say, yes, she can appeal, would be successful. No, we don't accept appeal, right?
We don't have a -- do we have a motion now?
We don't have -- now we don't have a motion. I will entertain a motion to accept the.
Accept, Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but it'd be to accept the appeal of the installation of the handrails, which would allow the handrails if you affirm the appeal.
I will make the motion to accept the handrails.
Accept the appeal.
Yes.
Is there a second?
What I'd like to also ask is, what is staff recommendation?
Yeah, we didn't hear that, did we?
I'm sorry, Cody.
We didn't hear that, did we?
No, that's what I was asking. That's the other thing I wanted to ask about.
This is a problem. I'll clearly address. I brought James Long with me to meet with the applicant, hearing that, you know, this wasn't offensive to a Historic Preservation. I, you know, this is a very -- I think everyone knows that I was living in Terry and Lonnie Bobo's place. I had, you know, beautiful commercial handrails whenever we were living downtown. These are definitely different, but it seems that, I mean, they don't -- I've heard from an HP commissioner themselves that this is not offensive to them. I think, in staff's opinion, this is not offensive.
I have a question. So why were they, by consensus, say, "No appeal"? So I don't understand how you do that, and then we, all of a sudden, we hear from one person who says appeal is a good thing. Does that make sense? You guys voted down appeal or went against this in the first place?
In the August meeting.
Not the appeal.
They actually voted twice.
In the August meeting, they voted to take no action. Whenever I informed them, that was pretty much because there had been a minor substantial period of time since the original vote had been cast to the time that she was making her appeal because of the education issues that she was facing. I extended the courtesy to the HPC. I didn't want to blindside them that there would be an appeal. And so I took it to the HPC, and during the regularly scheduled August meeting, they voted to take no action and to stand by their original vote.
That action at the second HPC would have required whoever made the motion the first time to make a motion to reconsider, and it would have required a second before they ever could have reconsidered.
And they did not.
And the appropriate remedy was really, after the first one, was an appeal to the city council. If they wanted to appeal, it was to come here.
Okay, right. We have a motion and a second to accept the appeal, which if you were -- just to confirm, if you are voting yes, you are supporting the appeal and the rails would stay in place. If you vote no, the appeal is denied, and the railing would be requested to be taken down. But you understand?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? Clay, please submit your votes. By a vote of four to two, the appeal is accepted. The railings will stay. I ask Mr. Woods, he can come back in.
She went through the process. You just set a ban. Not really. She did. Oh, we'll see this again. We'll see another thing. We've settled it worse. Guaranteed. Yeah, well, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, item number four, public hearing, discussion, possible action on ordinance 3272, which is amending a zoning ordinance for parcel property on College Avenue. Is there any comments from staff?
That item, Mayor, and the minutes needs to show that it's amending from A-2 to C-3. The C-3 is correct. There's clerical error in that first part.
Okay. Did we pick that up on the minutes? It's A-2 to C-?
Three.
Three.
Obviously, the planning commission meeting was held during the same time as workshop last week, and so I was not able to be there. From my understanding, it was a vote unanimous to approve recommendation for the rezoning to C-3.
Okay.
And then you have, for this one, you do have both the buyer and the potential seller for the landing question here, present tonight to answer any of your questions. Someone representing the seller, not necessarily the seller themselves.
We're on four.
Four? Yeah. It's already that way. It's A-2 to C-3.
Okay.
The one I saw that A-2-1, and we don't have such a thing.
Just a little bit of information, this is commonly known as the property that the Wings Adult Special Needs Community had recently occupied.
Okay, all right.
So public hearing, is it -- do we have people to make comments on this?
If people are here specifically to.
If you want to make a comment, anybody want to make a comment?
Probably be in affection more than it would be talking for.
I would have any comments.
Okay. All right, very good. I will entertain a motion then to accept the amending of the zoning ordinance.
So moved.
As identified.
Second.
Any further discussion? Submit your vote, please.
I'll vote for Ann.
Unanimous approval to accept that amendment as identified. Item number five, hearing and discussion of possible action of ordinance 3272. This is amending another zoning ordinance from R-1 to C-3 for property on East Oklahoma Avenue. Again, staff, comments, please.
Again, I don't know if you heard, but I was in the workshop, so I wasn't able to attend the planning commission. From my understanding, it was, voted unanimously to approve this. To kind of give a description of where this is, this is the area surrounding the former Wade's Hardware. This is not the address of Wade's Hardware itself, but the two lots surrounding that. Those are currently zoned as residential, but of course, we all know that the Wade's area has been serving as commercial for quite some time.
And the Bentons are also currently building there and have a permit to build there.
Correct. Because, because there was commercial use up until the last twelve months, they are still grandfathered in. At this point, they have not come to us for a rezoning. I'm sure after all their construction and all the fun that they have with relocating, they might want to consider that at some point. But currently, they're grandfathered in for commercial use.
Right.
So is this the two lots to the west of Lamar's building?
Yes.
Okay. So have we had any, by the way, I'd bring this up, what's going on with the car wash? Anything, have you heard anything on that? Is that going to be east of him, or is that going to be west of him?
I'm not sure at this time.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this? Okay, I will accept a motion and a second to approve this amendment. Any further discussion? Submit your vote, please.
I'll vote for Ann.
Unanimous approval to accept that amendment, to that ordinance. City manager is not with us tonight, has a, has a personal emergency and was not able to attend. Item number seven, comments from members of the council. Councilman Page.
Oh, sorry, thank you. I really don't have any comments in mind.
What? Really? Okay. Councilman Taylor?
Actually, I really don't either. I'm just ready for football season to get started. I guess that, that team up north looks real good this year, so...
Councilman Wood?
Well, I'd like to say, hope that city manager Bruce Johnson's family and everybody, give them Godspeed and hope everything is well with them, and give him time to get ready, get everything taken care of, and hope he gets back here pretty quickly.
Okay. Councilman Taylor? Thomas?
Thomas.
Thomas. Thomas, sorry.
I would just reiterate what you said about Bruce, but also with football season, we're back in school, so be careful driving out there, the kid will slow down a little bit.
Matter of fact, it's Thursday's, his first day of school.
Thursday's coming, so let's be a little more aware that those kids are on their way to school and give them the right of way. Just be safe out there.
Yep. Councilman Buthridge?
I second that. Pollard's opening this weekend, and there'll be hopefully some good fall parties coming. We'll be looking forward to those as the weather cools down a little bit, so camaraderie and community, and that's all I've got.
Okay.
I don't have anything today.